Go.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education for, gosh, September 23rd, regular meeting. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright.
Here.
Belleville. Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Reed.
Great. Will you please join me with, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Let's see. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to remind everyone who is here, both present and on television, about the mission of the Boulder Valley School District, and I will read it. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. So tonight, I would like to start our board meeting with the superintendent's report. Dr. Messenger.
Good evening, President Albright, members of the board. Welcome to our final business meeting of the month of September. It's great to have you here. I have three topics I would like to address with you this evening, first being a return to a topic. I talked about two weeks ago, and that's the Facility Master Plan, Educational Facility Master Plan work. So we continue to have good conversations throughout the communities, both with schools, civic organizations, business organizations, and city government. So last evening, we were at Superior, and they voted 7-0 to endorse a resolution. Lori Albright was there with us, Deirdre Polch was there with me, and so we had a nice presentation, and we were at Boulder City Council just a week ago tonight. So a series of meetings, and we met with the K-12 principals, all of our school principals and assistant principals today, just to visit with them a little bit about how it's going with communication at the school level, making sure their school communities are aware of the Facility Master Plan, and making sure they have the materials they need to communicate that. So, you know, it's a big district with a lot of patrons, and so it's a big effort, as you know, to get the word out, and we have an appointment coming up with Amy Bounds with the Daily Camera. We're hoping they'll give a nice feature on what's in the Facility Master Plan, so again, another way to help educate our community. So again, I'd be glad to answer questions about that, but everything seems to be on course as far as getting the word out to our community, and I know the campaign on 3A has also been very active, so my thanks to the good work that they're doing. So the second topic I'd like to address is around our ongoing work on the strategic plan. We provided an update late summer to all of you in a work session on where we are with that, and so the, I just remind you, because I know you have a lot of information that comes at you, but we had, and shared with you that on September 15th, the initial drafts of the work plans were to be completed and submitted, and they were, and so we've gone through those action plans, so the 17 action design teams. We've given them plenty of feedback on those design plans, and we met yesterday with the Strategic Plan Steering Committee, Superintendent Strategic Plan Steering Committee, our group that meets once a month, several of whom you've met because they've attended boardwork sessions. And so they, we divided them up, and they went through, each of them went through three different plans yesterday so that we could give additional feedback to the co-chairs and committee members of each of the action design teams. So those are being pushed back out for review and refinement by the action design team members, the same group that wrote the initial plan. So we are in that second draft phase, I would call it, if you were writing a paper. That's where they're at. What we found was overall, well, I'll just speak for myself, but having read several of the plans, overall, very good work, overall, still a lot of work to be done. I think that Tina Muu shared with you one evening at a work session that having 200 people involved in writing 17 plans on topics can be messy, and she was right, it can be messy. So not messy like not good, but just things that we needed to do some work on, and so we're working through that right now. Our targeted goal would be that we get an update on those drafts in late October, so they've got, they have some time to work at committee, and then we're going to come back and look at them one more time and make sure, or see if they incorporated our suggestions, or if not, why not. And then the other thing that we're working on right now is a template that would help extract some of the bigger issues out of the plans, and it isn't immersed in so much detail, so what we'd call significant work, so that that'll be a little easier for the reader to see what those areas are, and not anything different than what's in the plan, but really teasing out those big initiatives and big areas and timelines associated with that. So we'll work on that, and I think that'll be of interest to the board when we get those finalized, and those should be a first draft of those in October as well. So that's where we are with the process. Again, I just sing the praises of our action design team committee members, of the hours they've put in, probably more than what we had forecasted it would take to do, but they were committed to their work and invested a lot of time, and in particular, our co-chairs of those teams, you know, pulling folks together this summer and doing that work. So we're getting pretty close. And then, so that's work we're doing on the strategic plan. Again, we're on schedule with that. And then the third area I wanted to mention, and I'd be glad to discuss other topics if there's interest, is the, we'd sent out to you a week or so ago, an opportunity for you to give us some suggestion on a retreat. We ask you what topics you'd like to address, when you'd like to meet, and how much time you want to dedicate to that, and you have some differing opinions, and so we're, we just finished, received the last one on Sunday, so we're pulling that together. But I would say an overriding theme is a desire, and we'll take this back to the leadership of the board as a part of our agenda setting, but that you have interest in working on some continued, or some work on board governance, and our work together as a team of eight, leading the district, and so that was a pretty consistent pattern through each of your responses, and so I've reached out to a couple of folks whose names I have that work in this area, and we're doing some email exchanges to see about their interest or availability, and before I commit to them, obviously, I'll bring it back to the leadership of the board, but, so, some good resources for that, and then, then we'll do our best to find dates and times that work for all of us and the facilitator. But I just want you to know that we're, you finished up on Sunday, and we're, we're working on it. So thank you for, you all responded to the survey. Thank you for doing that. So, President Albright, that would conclude my comments. I'd be glad to answer any questions about those three topics or any others the board might have interested.
Great. Thank you very much. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Oh, I might just add on the strategic plan. I did, you've probably noticed this, on Sunday, I believe, I emailed you with just a reminder of how to get to the purpose statements for each of the action plans, and also I did a cut and paste and just put one of those in as a sample. But again, if you haven't had time, if you go to that website, you can get into each of the, on the left-hand column, each of those, so you can see who the membership is and what their purpose statements are. So that's our first work, okay?
Okay. Any comments or questions, Shelley? Yeah?
Bruce, you didn't mention, again, when, when are they coming to the board, or into the public, the action?
So we'll have, our plan is to have the final draft, I think, the end of October, is, we have a date set by which they are to be, so assuming we stay on path, then that would be when we feel like we've got that final draft, or near final draft. I mean, not, we've talked about this before, not that they can't be altered, but we want to get them as tidied up, and, and as important as anything is to incorporate the comments that have come back from these review teams, so they can consider those. So they've got some work time again now, and that would be the end of October, Shelley, those to be finished up.
Okay, because I thought the last time we talked about this, you had said no, late November.
Well, that was, that was, that's when they'll be done. We have not scheduled, as you know, within the Agenda Setting Committee. We talked about some possibilities of how to bring that to the board, but we have not set those yet. And you might also recall that because of Veterans Day schedule and Thanksgiving, we have kind of some sporadic meeting dates in November and December. So as we talked about in agenda setting, you know, we might choose to do some special meetings or worktimes to, because we just don't have a meeting scheduled for those two months because of our, just the calendar. But, so we've not set specific dates for that yet, Shelley, but I think we'll bring, we will bring that back to agenda setting to set those.
So they'll be done late, in late October, but it'll just be a matter of scheduling.
Getting them scheduled so that we can, you know, figure out the best way to bring them forward.
Thanks.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I would just say thank you for the email on Sunday that, with the template that you sent. It was helpful.
Oh, good.
It's, it's useful to have that information right in front when you're trying to understand what's going on, so thank you for sending that. I thought it, it really helped me.
All right, good.
I wanted to just ask about the retreat, because I think it would be a good idea to have it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, after you've had a chance to process a little more and think with the people, you know, communicate with people that might be able to facilitate it, if it would be worthwhile to have a discussion even by just phone, rather than waiting for the next Agenda Setting meeting, which isn't like another two weeks?
If we have some dates, yeah, so I, we'll see what possible dates that they would be available, and then, yeah, we certainly could do that.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, let's just get it moving sooner rather than later, and do we have any sense about a day of the week from board members? Was there any?
You were consistently inconsistent.
Good, okay. Well, then, that makes it very easy for us.
So.
Good.
Yeah, reaching agreements on a day to meet will be our first task, so, yeah, so some preferred weekend and some preferred during the week, so.
Okay.
We probably won't be able to do both, so we'll figure that out. And truly, what may dictate this a little bit is the availability of the facilitator.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
And, so, but, yeah, so you have different thoughts on which would be better.
Okay. Great. Sounds good. Any other questions on the strategic plan or retreat or anything else? Okay. The next item of business is public hearing and public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask the persons to address the board. One, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Two, please limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over, which we won't because we have two speakers, but the, the presentation limit is two minutes. Three, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There is a lighting system on the podium. Starting at green, or it starts at green when you have your two minutes, it turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and it turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the other speakers. We have two speakers tonight, and the first is Malcolm Orton, who, and will be followed by Barry Ekins. So Ms. Orton, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Since there are only two of us, can I beg for 30 seconds extra? Possible?
See where we get.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to express my views on several issues. My name is Malcolm Orton. I'm a 36-year veteran of all public schools, taught in the St. Verane District that went bankrupt. I'd like to express my thoughts on the $1.3 billion bond issue. I view the bond issue as an equation with, with value on one side of the equation and cost on the other side of the equation. The district has done a wonderful job on creating a website that is full of information regarding the value of this project. Absolute wonderful job, great things in there. The other side of the equation is the cost, which is buried on page 242 in language that only a CPA could understand. My issue is not with the value, scope, or even the cost of the $1.3 billion project, but it is with the lack of transparency of the true cost. Here are some facts. The bond issue is 1.3 billion, not 575 million. You have to add in the $800 million in interest costs. The length is over 30 years. To say the cost is only $47 per year, per hundred pay of value, is, in my opinion, being dishonest. To leave out the fact that it's over 30 years and, and to not simply do the math that, that over half the homes will pay over $400 per year over 30 years, I think puts into play the lack of transparency. The president should explain to both sides, should explain both sides of the bond to this, when addressing the city council. To say that it's only $47 per 100,000, I think is dishonest. I'm asking that the district put on the front page of their website a calculator so that each homeowner can calculate their cost for one month, one year, 30 years, address the issue of cost at each board meeting, and run ads in the newspaper explaining these issues. Finally, just 10 seconds more. In addition, I challenge each of you to sponsor a homeowner that is dealing with the flood and fire issues to pay the increased taxes until they are fully recovered.
Thank you, Ms. Orton.
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Mr. Messenger to, for his responses, and you've been incredibly, we've had a lot of disagreements, but I certainly appreciate your communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orton. Thank you. Mr. Ekins, welcome. We're glad to have you here. To see you again. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name is Barry Ekins. I'm a taxpayer in the district. I'm a voter, and I'm a parent. My daughter attends public schools here. She's at Platt Middle School, and at Platt, I'm the Platt Volunteer Parent Representative on the District Accountability Committee. What I wanted to bring to your attention is NPR news story that aired the weekend before last about a school board in East Ramapo, New York, and I don't know if any of you heard that story. It was a segment of This American Life. It was about an hour-long segment. It was a riveting story, and the fundamental issue that came up was that there was a community, minority community in that district who were taxpayers, but they sent all their children to private schools. So they were basically paying for two schools, two, the public schools, and they were paying for their, their children to attend private schools. In 2007, their group became large enough, they took over the school board, cut taxes dramatically, cut spending dramatically, basically in favor of the, their children who are attending private school rather than public schools. And so for me, I think this is, you know, my request for you would be to listen to this, spend an hour listening to this program, this American life, and see what can be learned from that. I think there's a lot of value in what other school boards are going through so that this school board can try and address and minimize that kind of conflict. And fundamentally, in that district, it was conflict between the landowners who are paying taxes and voting, and the public school students, and once those public school students were in the minority, they, the school board, in essence, put the priority on the taxpayers. They were the primary interest they were serving, rather than the children in the public school. So that, that's my request, is that you take a look at this, and, because I think there are issues that could be translated to probably all school districts, but, so anyway, that would be my request. Please, take some time, listen to that, and, and see what can be learned for this school district going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next item on our agenda is board communication. Board members. Tom.
So thanks for the comments about the bond. To me, transparency is very important. I think that's an excellent suggestion to put a calculator on our website. And I think it's important for everyone to understand not only what we're doing, but also what it costs. Bruce, do you recall the mill levy amount, was it for this bond, what that would, what they equated to? Leslie told us, but I've forgotten.
So it's $4,700 per 100,000 on residential property of actual value. So, and I think the example we had used before was for the average-priced home in Boulder Valley School District is 400,000. That got us, right, 187 or 188. So, and 7.96 is the percentage that's applied on residential, and it's close to 29% that's applied to non-residential because of the Gallagher Amendment. So, so on the, non-residential, obviously, depending on the price and the business, it's going to be more than that.
Right.
But we've used that factor. We, and we've been communicating on, communicating on per 100,000 because of, you know, folks is, not everybody lives in 400,000 dollars, so then they could equate what their actual value is to that, so that's what we've tried to communicate.
Good, thank you. Second thing, Shelley and I are liaisons to the District Accountability Committee. We had a good meeting with the exec board group there this week, and, you know, as you recall, last, last spring, we decided to have a standing agenda item monthly for the DAC to come and, and talk to us, and so they're preparing for that and want to find out what the schedule is so they have a little time to prepare. So, you know, as that gets set by the Agenda Committee, I have a request that we communicate that to them so they can be ready. The idea here is something we started last year working with them on, in that there will be certain standing items that they have to do either statutory, obviously, they have to comment on how the, you know, the district spends the money, so the budget, they intend to do that. Also, an audit of our, of our school improvement plans, which is a strategic plan this year. We want to make them one of the same, if they're anxious to get started, looking at that, and I'm sure that they will be glad to see these, these plans as they come out, and they can start, start planning around that. But in addition to those, there, there is the idea around items that would come up that either they would like to address or board members would like for them to address. And so what they would like to, to have input from us when they come was any ideas that we would have on things that, that they would, that you would be particularly interested in for them to take a look at, and they want to take those ideas back and see if there's good agreement around the DAC to do that, and, you know, decide if that's what they want to do. But that way, we can have some fast turnaround items, and with monthly interactions with them, we can get the turnaround time with DAC from a year, basically, it's been, to hopefully on a monthly level. So that's just something I promise I would, I would pass along to the board. Shelley, was there anything that I missed there? Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, they, it's not on our agenda because they haven't been coming, but they're welcome to come in. welcome to come anytime. I mean, I think.
Yeah, we had decided to put them on monthly, make it a standing agenda item, and they could plan for it.
Fair enough. You're right.
And so they had, it hasn't been on there, so they didn't know what to do. Of course, they're just getting geared up now for the new school year, right?
So was there any talk about wanting to have a meeting with the DAC leadership and the board?
There was, and we do that typically. And they'll be looking for a time to schedule that once they get going.
Yeah.
But I think the main idea this time was when one of the monthly meetings is going to happen, and, you know, when they're ready to start dialoguing and see, bounce their ideas off of us, see what we would like. Showed a great enthusiasm with helping us as much as they can. So I think that's great. A lot of good talent there.
Yeah, I agree. I like DAC. It's always a good group. Great. So we should talk about it, I guess, at agenda setting and figure out when they can come, but we should start in October. Maybe that's something we could talk about in the retreat as well.
Sure.
Is, you know, time to set a time to meet with their leadership to talk about the year going forward.
I just requested some, you know, time so they would have time to plan, you know, they meet monthly as well.
Yeah. Well, thank you for going and being a liaison. And Shelley?
Yeah.
Tom, didn't they say October 14th would be the ideal time to come for the first report? Because, yeah.
Yes, I can look at that.
Okay. Yeah, well, we can get him on. Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have anything to talk about? Sam, please.
Well, I attended much of the parent advisory council meeting at Boulder High last night and heard a report from interim principal Terry Galach, and came away with overall very positive impression of Boulder High, and just was struck again by the incredibly hard work that the parents put in, not only at that school, but at our schools district-wide. And we're looking at approving some PTA funding contributions later, and I'm just so grateful for the work that these parents put in and the gifts they give. So I just wanted to say that. I appreciate Mr. Ekins coming and directing us to that episode of This American Life. I haven't heard that. I will listen to it. And Mr. Orton, I always am in favor of greater transparency. I would have no problem with a calculator on the website. But $47 on 100K is an honest number. It's accurate, and so I do take issue with calling that dishonest. We may want other numbers to enhance people's understanding of that, but that's an accurate and honest number. That's all.
So one thing occurred to me about the numbers of the $47 per 100,000 of actual valuation is that people who have purchased a home understand the mortgage, and even if your house is worth $100,000, we know that if you borrow money from the bank, you're going to be paying more money. I mean, that's fairly typical and understanding, I think. I don't have any objection to putting that information. I mean, the information is there, and as we, I think, as BVSD and the campaign hear about questions that people have, it's important that we answer them in a real transparent way. So I'm really glad to do it, and I'm glad he brought it up. I think it's fine. But I do think that people who are buying property understand that it's, unless you pay cash, there's some interest that's associated with it, and if it's a longer debt, it rolls out. Anyway, it's a good point, and we certainly value transparency, and I'm glad to see more of it. And thank you, Ms. Ekins. Yeah. I worry a lot about privatizing education, and I think it's really critical. As a personal value of mine, is to think about public education and public funding for schools. And, you know, this board for years has worked, done a lot of work to try to support improved and enhanced, supported public education in our state and locally, and this bond is one way for our public to say, I mean, the bond that we have on the ballot right now is one way for our public to say, yeah, we do support public schools. So, and I'm hopeful that we won't run into that kind of situation. I can't imagine that that would happen here, but I know it's happening. I read about it across the country of some of that. So thank you for raising the question and bringing it forward. I think it's just vital for democracy and our future. Not to be too dramatic about it, but thank you very much for bringing it. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and I will read it. And it is personnel items, 6.1, personnel items, 6.2, approval of minutes, September 9th, 2014, special meeting; 6.3, approval of minutes, September 9th, 2014, regular meeting; September 5, or, excuse me, 6.5, did I read that wrong? 6.4, approval of minutes, September 16th, special meeting; 6.5, acceptance of donation, Douglas Elementary; 6.6, acceptance of donation, Eldorado K-8; 6.7, acceptance of donation, Flatiron's Elementary; 6.8, acceptance of donation, Foothill Elementary; 6.9, acceptance of donation, Superior Elementary; 6.10, approval of contract for intergovernmental service agreement between BVSD and the City of Boulder; 6.11, information, three-year support commitment; 6.12, ratification of negotiated agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Classified Employees Association, known as BVCEA; 6.13, a grant for, to Sanchez Elementary School for Community Learning and Family Resource Center from the Community Foundation Millennium Trust. And that's it. Do I have a motion to approve? Sam, is there a second? Tina? Okay. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments about any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay. Shelley? Thanks.
About the intergovernmental service agreement, can you remind me the criteria for becoming a family resource school for purposes of that contract? Is it just FRL percentage?
So those are the schools where we have the centers. I don't know that there's a specific percentage. Deirdre, do you know if there, I don't recall that there's a criteria to a specific number.
No, it's based on need, but there isn't a cut number, and it's City of Boulder and then one in the City of Lafayette.
Okay, so that's just where they are.
Yeah, and it's based on need. It's also based on families' need as well, not just what's in the school, because they're also meeting the needs of the families.
Right. So it looks like that's costing about, I don't know, a little over $30,000 a school to do that, because it's, the contract's for $160,000 for five schools. So if we wanted to do that in more schools, is that about what it would cost to do that? Because I know there's a lot of concern about having more support in the elementary schools, and I'm just wondering what that would look like, what that would cost.
I mean, what's probably obvious is it's matching funds, and so that we could equate our cost based on that, and obviously, it would take the participation of the other agency to match that. But so, yeah, I mean, I think you could equate it to our participation cost, if we expanded.
That's our participation cost, and much of that is in kind. I mean, the significant cost is on the City of Boulder.
Yeah.
Okay, I had another question. Can I? About the N4 contract? What we're looking at is an amendment to a current agreement, and I'm just wondering, like, what the change is and what the amendment actually is. Is it to the support fees, the cost?
So Andrew, would you mind coming up? Andrew Moore, chief information officer for the district, he's been working on this N4 contract for some time, and it's probably, well, I know he's more familiar with it than I am, but I think he's very familiar with it.
Yes, good evening. This is the support contract for HR, payroll, you know, all of our services to run the business of education. It is basically the renegotiated contract that'll take us through the next three years.
Okay, so it's just an extension?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll continue to extend, you know, after these three years, we'll extend it again most likely, unless, you know, some feature or functionality is to change.
And are these support fees dramatically different from?
No.
The years prior?
No, and what's baked in there is a 3% year-over-year increase. So by doing a three-year contract, we've locked in a manageable increase.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
I'm sure that I misread that when I, I mean, when I spoke. It's 6.11 N4. I just didn't realize that was the new name of the company. But it's a three-year support commitment for the, on the consent agenda. Sorry. Okay. Do you have another question?
Nobody else does.
Go ahead.
About the BVCEA contract, can you explain the Article 14 around wages, the 4% and the 2.8% and being placed on the market schedule? What's the 4%?
So Shelley, would you like to, so Shelley Langraft, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, has taken lead on this finalization of this contract in her role, and recently ratified, so.
And is the 2.8% also market-based, just like the salary?
So what we did is, last spring, the BBC and the district worked on a transitional market schedule. And so what we did is, everyone that is currently in the salary schedule from last year, they moved on to the market schedule, and in that schedule was a 2.8% raise.
Okay.
And so what we did is through that, some people, because of the market study, some received more. So if you received your 2.8, because if you were supposed to receive nothing moving on to the new market schedule, because that's what the market said, you would get the 2.8. If you were to get more than that, but less than the 4%, that was that, kind of that range in there between the 2.8 and the 4%. So everybody got at least a minimum of a 2.8% raise up to 11%.
Okay, and what, sorry, what was the 4% again?
So the 4% is kind of a cap that we set, that if you didn't, you could get up to 4% from last year's schedule, if that's what you would have gotten on the old schedule.
Okay, I got it.
So we were trying to minimize, because it was a market-based schedule, you know, some people, because the market study reflected a higher increase in the salary, some did not, so we tried to compensate for that, to say, although you only get, you know, 1%, we're going to move you up to a minimum of 4%.
Right, okay. And do you know what the net, the net amount, the net effect was of the contract then, over last year?
The increase in the cost? There's a document.
Was that in the summary of the settlement?
Correct.
Okay, so that was the net impact?
Correct.
Of all the settlements?
Correct.
Right, okay.
It's the same document that we've shared every time we've passed, you guys, we've ratified an agreement, that same attachment has been given to you.
So I think that that was 11 million, $11 million, the total summary of settlements? Does that sound right?
I believe so.
Okay.
I don't have the document in front of me. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Good. Anyone else, questions? Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, Sandy, will you please call the vote?
Albright?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Duqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is agenda-setting items. So I was actually thinking about this a little bit, and thinking that our meetings are being a little short these days, and what else we might want to be thinking about in terms of talking and doing some planning around. And there were a couple of items that I think some board members have mentioned, that I just want to make sure that I have in my mind as we go to agenda-setting, so that we can be sure to get them scheduled. One is, there was a question about open enrollment and how is that affecting the district? I think, Sam, I think you had a question about a special ed audit, and I just think it would be good to bring that, think about. I mean, I just want to just say that it hasn't escaped my radar that we need to.
Just about 11 months ago, I put that on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
And I was told it's coming.
Okay, good. Good. Okay, well, it's still, it's still on my radar. And the other thing is, and Bruce, when we were in the last agenda-setting meeting, we had some talk about the strategic plan rollout, and so I just want to continue to think about the topics to help inform the board and as we roll this out, and the community as well. But I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that, and I know you are. I mean, I fully understand that you are, but those are some things I want to get, you know, make sure that we get scheduled, particularly if it'll be out at the end of October, which I'm very excited to see, because I know you've been working on it for a while with a lot of input and a lot of hours and a lot of time, and so I think that, I think that'll be good. So, anyway, those are kind of my thoughts, just to make sure, on agenda-setting. I don't have anything new to talk about, but I'm just, that's on my radar. Tom?
Yeah, so I've been asking about class sizes for a long time now, also submitted RFI on that, and asked that for a number of agenda-setting items. So that's something that I had requested, and I'd still like to have a discussion, see the data.
Okay. We actually talked about that at agenda-setting last time, and it will come to us, I think, following the October count.
Correct. So last week, when we had our pre-work session before our six o'clock meeting, our five o'clock work session, that was one of the topics we discussed that evening.
Yes.
And what I shared with you was that with this count in October, once we, you know, get the final count, and so it's accurate, then we will push that data forward. And so, and I mentioned there will be some limitations to that data report because of reasons we've explained before, so when we get our October count verified, then we'll share that with the board.
Great. It'll be good to know.
And then the board can determine what you want to do with it. But it'll be all the data.
End of October, are you thinking?
I would need to check with Mike Wilcox, who does that at our enrollment office, to make sure that I have the exact date, but just depends on when it's finalized with the state.
Okay.
Good. Okay, Shelley?
We kind of mentioned this earlier, but I just want to make sure that the DAC report gets on the agenda.
Okay.
Just officially.
Right.
And also, that we at least get on the list, the annual meeting with DAC and with the board, that we get that scheduled at some point. So I guess we'll talk at the next DAC meeting when they'd like to do that and see if that works for the rest of the board. Also, Tina and I met with the City of Boulder, I said, about a month ago, longer, I don't know. I think it was last, actually. Okay. To talk about issues of mutual concern with the city. And the district did a great job pulling together what we're already doing and facilitating that meeting. And I just think it would be nice if the board got regular updates on how our mutual projects are progressing. So if the district could have whoever would do that, if we could get that on the agenda, where they just came and reported on, you know, how the fiber deal is going and how, you know, transportation, you know, ecopasses are going, or, you know, the various things that we discussed, there were many, actually. So it'd be nice to have a regular update so that those balls don't get dropped, you know? Not that they would, but at least we will know what's going on, I think, which is helpful. And let's see. One thing I haven't, I don't know if this is an agenda item or just an information item or what, but I haven't heard of any involvement by students in the strategic plan. So I'm wondering, you know, if that's something we care about, if we would like to, you know, find out how students can be incorporated into this process. Because they used to come here and give a monthly report. We never hear, I mean, that group's disbanded, and I don't know what, you know, what input they're having into the strategic plan, so we can get some ideas about how that's going. The other thing, and I know that this is, this came up recently, and the district's working on it, but the privacy policy for the district, and I just want to make sure that gets on the agenda at some point, whenever the district's ready to talk about what that policy's shaping up to look like. Because what I would like is to be able to take that back to DAC once we've looked at it and asked them for their input, because I know that they have concerns and would like to talk to their Saks about that. So it'd be good to get that rolling.
Can I just comment on that? That might be something that we, I don't know what showed up in our responses on the retreat, but I would think that it would be a good topic on the retreat, is to think about policies, because we've actually talked about our policy rollout and how we review our policies. And that would be, I think, an appropriate discussion to have. And then the privacy question as a really important policy.
As an example of?
Right.
Of how policy gets made now?
Right.
And reviewed. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So we might think about putting that on the retreat agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's all, yeah, right now.
Okay. Tina?
Yeah?
All right. Well, then, if there's no further items, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you all.